Hello folks, we are back and I ran us a little short on starting time today. So we're gonna get right into it and we'll talk as we go. What the friggin' frig? Why haven't you ordered yet? So, okay, so we gotta meet Kiji before the morning, so let's just start with Wes since we got such short time. And it doesn't, does this order up? Yeah, that orders up. It wasn't even marking that. So let's do our Westies and so we last time we had a huge mistake. I made a huge mistake and I mixed our amp with our X and anyways, we had a good suggestions from Catherine. She just said, "Just friggin' sell it as amp." And as long as nobody complains, you'll probably get away with it basically, so. So let's try that and hope it works, because we need to recover that money. And I'll try to stop making mistakes. I think it was 35 MJ. 30 amp, 14 MJ. So yeah, I've been a little distracted. Um, today we just got our page launched for uh, Queen Fish Games second project, which is called um, Yard Sale Simulator and it's gonna just be amazing. I'm so excited about this and it's happening so fast. We literally spent nights and days just without sleep and working on this because we have to always have an income obviously and we're just getting into the game making. We haven't made tons of money off of this stuff yet. We gotta be careful tonight. We're already in so much trouble, right? I just ran right out in the open. Alright, what you need, bro? What you need? Oh my god, we got so much crystal meth on me, I just didn't even realize. Okay, so I ordered all that crystal meth. We need to go drop it off immediately. I didn't even realize. I was running around trying to get stuff done before nighttime. Usually play out the day without you guys, because I feel like you don't wanna watch me just running around checking stuff during the day, stuff like that. Checked our plants. I ordered what you could see. For we had some meth and we're supposed to meet Kiji, I think his name is. And apparently he's a meth dealer. I don't have a lot of experience with this. I did it once a long, long time ago. I just know we gotta meet him before 11 AM. So we're gonna go just after the police hours lift, we're gonna go see him and see what's up. And it's gonna probably be a little extra of an episode. Usually I wouldn't go this long, but uh, just for you guys can see the meeting. See what's gonna happen. This game has a pretty cool gang um, cinematics in it. They take a little long and they're a little bit dragged out if you've seen them before. But the first time is pretty awesome, I gotta say. Dude. Okay, we gotta get this put away. So yeah, our new game, uh, Yard Sale Simulator is up on our website, so I won't talk too much about it. I'm sorry that I am. I shouldn't be doing it while I'm playing someone else's game. But you can check it out on uh, the website and it'll give you a pretty much a good preview of what the game's going to be. And if that excites you and you're like the idea of building um, or buying things and selling and repairing and um, just making your money, building up from like a table from a yard sale to having a stand, maybe even opening a store one day. And then any of that stuff interests you, you probably gonna wanna check it out. Website's queenfishgames.com and if you wanna throw in on your wishlist, it just came out on Steam today, the coming soon page. And that's why I've been so crazily excited. I just, I can't wait to play the game myself. I haven't got to do a ton of testing, but it's not at that point yet, but we're gonna do um, shoot, I should be taking orders. Sorry about that. We're gonna do a test play, so if you wanna get in on the test play and you're interested in that stuff, you can join our Discord. I'm gonna try to remember to post a link to my Discord. Feel free to join it if you're, if you want. Uh, message me directly if you're interested in that, in um, the test play. Or Queen Fish, that's my wife. So, and one of us will uh, figure it out for you what you need to do. It's gonna be a little bit away before we get the test play and like uh, before we get the demo out, but it's, it's not gonna be that far. We're giving ourselves more time than we're gonna need on our release date. So that way, um, when we're finished super early, it's only a bonus. But um, there's nothing else out there like it basically. I've seen, I've looked around for a bit, we both did. And we didn't see anything like it basically, like seems like a one of a kind concept for a game. The only thing I could say that was kinda similar would be maybe be barn finders. But don't you worry, it's nothing like that. It's completely different style. We're not trying to clone nobody or something like that. We have our own ideas. And it's very different from that. That's the thing about us, me and Queen. Um, we're the perfect couple and a lot of, oh my god, oh my god, oh my god, oh my god. Did you friggin' see that? Almost got us busted again. I don't know how they didn't see us. Me and Queen are pretty, hmm, what the hell am I doing? I was right here. Me and Queen are pretty much the perfect couple for a few reasons and uh, one of them is I have the most insane uh, original ideas you could probably think of, but I'm a scatterbrain. So like um, I'm all over the place. Um, I can't concentrate a lot, stuff like that. And she's kinda the opposite in that sense in the way she is able to concentrate and um, basically every time that one of us has a weakness, the other one has a strength in it. If that makes sense to you guys. Like I'm dyslexic, she's not. Stuff like that, like so, if I'm weak in one area, she's really strong in it, so we've literally, we just made the perfect team for making games. I don't know how that worked out so well, but I gotta thank the lord. Because it's been wonderful. If you can't tell, I worship that woman. She's everything I can dream about. And more. And I hope for all you guys, you all find that one day. What did I just take? I don't even know what I just took. That one probably, eh, Wes? Let's do, uh, let's do kennel. It's pretty close. Kennel, then... Oh, he's just looking to deal, yeah. Two grounds. Um, old market. I feel like we got some missed here, but they just haven't ordered yet. I don't know what's going on. Alright, maybe they don't like my new stuff. They don't like my new amp. 11 amp. Let's take it from this new stuff. We gotta get rid of this stuff. This is the junk. It's mixed with E and crap. I won't put that in there. Take the rest of them from that too. We need six. Just gonna dump this crap in there. Alright, package. I think we need three and three. Got it all and four, so let's take one more of four. I think we got them all now. Looks like we just hit midnight. So yeah, I'm sorry if I've been distracted. Uh, I'll probably be able to calm down a little bit, but like I said, we've been up late working and working and working, trying to get this page up. Because um, it's our dream to one day be able to just make games. Um, before when we were playing other games, we made a couple things inside of the games, like miniature games inside of other games. And people really seemed to enjoy them and we really enjoyed showing people what we can do basically, so um, I won't mention the game because a lot of stuff happened in those games. My god, I gotta watch for cops. I'm so distracted still. But um, it made us have a love to wanna entertain people and wanna show them what we're thinking and stuff like that. It's fun. So, it's like we, everything kinda is falling into place. We just need to get to a place where we could sell enough games that we're able to pay our salaries basically and just make games all day is our goal. And I don't know if it's gonna happen, but we're gonna keep trying because that's our dream. I really feel like it kind of is, but I just don't wanna jinx it. Like, we're on our second project. We're already making some money, you know? It's been great, but I just don't wanna jinx it. Had a lot of bad experiences in my life and this has been one of the better ones, uh, this whole game experience in general. So I just uh, sometimes when things go so right, you just almost don't even wanna talk about them, because you feel like you're gonna make them go wrong. See, I'm starting to whisper. I don't wanna talk about it. So I hope you guys uh, check it out anyways. I'll stop talking about it for real Z's this time. Why am I trying to open this? Let's go take more orders. Figure out what the hell is going on with those other idiots and why they aren't ordering more yet. Drop some money off to Eddie, Bo Betty. What you got, bud? Like one kennel. Oh yeah, yeah, that's the new dealer. Stink, stink, stink kennel. Let's take them all. I guess we'll go check our plants after that, if we got a chance. So what do we got? Four MJ, four MJ, three MJ. So, oops. So, two times four. Oh shoot, was it three? I think. I had such a bad memory. Yeah. And two amp. You're getting the new ecstasy amp mix, brother. It's gonna keep you up all night, baby. You're welcome. And I did get more E and everything, but we need to mix it, stuff before we can open up sales, but I need to um, get some daytime first and we need to go meet Kegji or whatever his name is. I think his name's Kegji? I think it's K-A-G-J-I, Kegji? And I think he's Japanese, Japanese? I don't know why I said it weird, Japanese. And I actually have a family that's part Japanese. I always thought they had such a cool culture. And I really admire it, but I probably don't know enough about it to make that judgment, to be honest. I know some things, but not all things. Think that uh, grass's greener effect happens with so many things in life. You always think things are better on the other side until you live it, but... Oh, I can hear cops. Go, 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 go. Frig there, but they're close. Okay, let's go over the wall here. I don't wanna bump into these. Oh my god, I thought he was a cop for a second. I could still hear them too. There we go, yeah, yeah, yeah. Jeez, jeez Louise, okay. So as you guys know, we got 24K from um, jewelry and stuff like that. The biggest drop we've ever got. Um, with cell phones and all that stuff. And I got a few more um, during the day. That's why I was a little bit late on. I usually give it at like a half hour before I gotta start dealing. To just give myself uh, enough time to take orders and run to the farthest deal is what I usually do on the east side. Or a stink would work the same way, I suppose. But I just uh, I kinda shorted myself on time doing that stuff. But we've gotten rid of all of it. Let's check our computer and see how much has been washed so far. Go to our bank. There we go. As you can see, we're able to upgrade and Catherine wants us to, or advised us to upgrade to this one, which is a 60% payoff. But it's just gonna take a little to keep on getting paid off. We've got 18,000 more to be washed, so it should be a little bit faster again. Alright, no deals yet. No deals, no deals, no deals. Feel like some got lost somehow, but they just don't like me anymore, my stuff. I don't know. Let's go hop a couple dumpsters, I guess. Can't save yet. Or we can, yeah, you know what? Maybe we'll go start mixing some of that stuff. Might be a better plan and then we can start peddling it, right? Alright. And I wonder this, okay? Everybody told me to go section C to do cocaine dealing. Have you tried giving out samples over here? Do you think that they would start uh, buying coke over here if I sampled some out? Just a question. Let me know what you think. Crystal meth, right, 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 right. So what we gotta do? Gotta put one of these? What did I do this wrong? One of these and one of there? What's in there? Oh, there's already friggin' meth in there. Oh my god, I gotta check that. Crystallized contents, oh my god. I was friggin' frigged up right away. E? Okay, I almost put it in with the sugar. Take the sugar, dump the sugar in here. So that's all sugar now. Let's do it one more time and get rid of the sugar, for we don't mix it by accident. And that's gonna be our mixing jar. We're gonna take everything we need to mix with the other stuff from there, hopefully. We'll get a bigger jar eventually. Oh, we need to check our plants. We do got our weed dryer ready. And we got quite a bit of crystal. I hope it's okay for Kegji if we mix it. Kinda worried it's not gonna be now that I say it, but we're gonna just mix it up and hope, hope that he takes mixed. We'll keep the mixture above 75% and that way if he does take mixed, he won't have any issues with it. So that's full now and I can't, oh my god, that's dumb. So let's package this to get rid of it, because we need this to grind up the ecstasy, so. I'm gonna do that and then we're gonna just do that. Okay. And then we'll just sit this sugar there. Now, well, we need extra sugar in there. We can just pull it from there. Okay, so we need to be in this mode. We can do this. And how, what's the limit on this? Looks like 200, right? Capacity 400. So we can do two at a time then. So that would be 60 sugar. To keep our mixture at 75%. 76, even better. And then we're just gonna name it meth to avoid confusion. Alright, okay. We're gonna take our ecstasy and we're gonna grind it. Milk contents. And uh, we should be able to open up meth sales. Maybe we shouldn't though, but... Maybe we should be saving it for Kegji or whatever, but... Okay, so put this in here. Mill up the other ecstasy. Gotta not screw this ecstasy up this time. Last time we just bungled the whole thing. Guess I could've done 390 sugar and it would've left 10 and then we could've did three batches at once, but that's fine. Just thinking about it now. So even though those were short of 100 each time, when I uh, grinded them, I'm still gonna do 30. And the percentage should be around, more around 75%. Oops, that's 200, so we need 60. My bad. Let's hope we did this right. Yeah, 76 still, okay. Well, I thought it might be 75, but it's still 76. Alright, so we can dump that in there. Dump that in there. Got 150 of that now. Our ecstasy is being mixed, that's done. Okay. Empty. Did I crystal or mix this? I think I did, right? Yeah. Yeah. Alright. Um, Let's start making some E pills before we leave. It looks like we're starting to sound like we're getting more and more orders, but let's just start that. It's actually pretty fast. Maybe we'll wait it out. We're gonna have to get more sugar though. Got enough to finish that meth batch, I guess we could start that. Oh no, there's still 11 in there, damn it. I figured maybe we can take some of these E pills with us and also get them up for sale. Make one package of 100. And let's dump more in there. Make pills, baby. Alright, that uh, crystal meth's gonna be a bit. But we're burning our night away too, so we need to get home. I usually mix that stuff during the day, because I don't usually deal during the day to keep my heat down and get more experience points at night. Lately, stuff is just went awry, because my mind's been thinking about other stuff, obviously. So let's do this. Um, how should we do this? Let's do meth. Third, and we'll do ecstasy. Ecstasy. I always do pink on ecstasy. I don't know what color you guys do, but I don't know why, but I do, and then I do dark blue on uh, meth. I don't know why those are the colors to me, but it always made sense to me for some reason. Curious if you guys followed the same color scheme and why you chose those colors. That's our crazy amp. Okay, let's see what we got for orders. Let's open up ecstasy sales and crystal meth sales. Let's disable that. And yeah, let's take your money. Take your money. You're not even ready. East, east, okay. Let's just take them all. Alright, so we got 10 MJ and we got 10 amp. We're gonna take it from the bottom one for the amp, because we wanna get rid of that stuff a little more. I heard the phone go off again. 13 MJ, perfect. Give all this money to Eddie and we'll go meet Koji soon, but we do need to check our weed plants too, and I did complain about this. This is the one problem that I have with outdoor, is it takes so goddamn long. Just seems like it never ends, like it's just never gonna be ready. Like, I think we're at like 50%, or on to like 4%. Maybe it's the kind I grabbed. I think I grabbed a different kind this time. I didn't realize we were so close to day already. One. Get our monies. We'll go see Koji as soon as the uh, police hours are lifted. Just make sure we're clean before we cross that border. Thank you, thank you. Right in front of my shack. Where's your buddy? I think we had a better night anyways. I don't think we got any heat at all. And you shut your door when you come here too. Um, if you're using this place, the cops will cut through here. I just need you to know that. There's been a few times I like, just looked over and the cop's like, "Hey, I'm mixing meth" and he's friggin' walking through. Jesus. Just better to shut it, always. I'm gonna have to dump this. But it should give us a nice starting amount for this stuff anyways. Um, so crystallize, this needs to go there. Crystallized contents, we could pack product on this one. This stuff gets a little confusing when you got a bunch of orders going on at once. You can make pills out of that. Now that's empty. Now that's empty. And our police hours should get lifted anytime, so we'll go drop the stuff off at home. And then we will go visit Kegji. I think I remember where he is, but I just hope I don't look like a fool and I'm mistaken and I'm banging on the wrong door, but... We'll see. Mix looks good, 76%, perfect. And it's meth. Make the names match, that way they can stack and everything. Looks like that's done, 55... 7. Add the package and done. Well, it's still going, that's still going, alright, um... Did get another order, but I don't really think, yeah, there we go. I don't really think I was gonna have time to get it done. Just try to get home with this without getting interrupted. And we'll go see this Kegji fella. And I know usually I stop the video here at this point to not go too long, but uh, you guys are gonna hang out with me, but we're gonna meet this Kegji guy, because I'm a little nervous. I'm just kidding, but you can come with me and just see what it's like. Ecstasy. There we go. Just dump them all there, because we got big stacks. I wish there was another way to just throw them straight in, but this is the way you gotta do this crap. There we go, we got a pretty good stock of that. And there's more of this coming, but we got a pretty good chunk of this, hopefully enough to cover a few orders. Alright, um... Check if any of those are cash deliveries, because we need to give Eddie money. Nope. Can't take them. Got an order in Bad Asia though, that's weird. Alright, let's um... Oh, we leveled, I forgot about that. Almost full stamina. We are clean. Let's, let's go see Kegji and then we'll drop the money off to Eddie and go home.
Hey, you, stop right there. Are you carrying any drugs or weapons?
Just know it's somewhere up in this east end, so... Oh, it's up in Bad Asia actually. There it is, there's a marker. Sweet. Well, there's no question where it is now. Easy enough, we'll go see this fella and he'll be like, "Hey, I really like you. You want money?" Something like that. Not sure what we owe Eddie too. I think we owe him like 6 grand, I'm not really sure. I put in a really big order to try to get prepared for this Kegji fella. Looks like it's this door. This whack looks so wacky on the outside. It looks pretty nice on the inside. Wait. What the frig? Shouldn't we be able to open this right now? Alright, well, I don't know. I guess we might have to come back at night and meet him? And I'll have to uh, put it in the next video, I guess. I thought I could come right now. It's 11 AM, right? It has to be after 11 AM, I don't know. Looks like a good planting area up here. I wonder if anybody's ever planted their shit up here? How it went if they did. It's kinda out of the way. Oh, let's go do that real quick and go home. Go water our plants, I forgot all about that. Woo! What a lady. You know what's weird to me? I see kids all into animes and stuff like that, like I, I know some people just watch the shows and I don't mean that, but I mean the people who like do the sexual anime and all I could think is like, it's a cartoon. Hope it's not, you guys, and I'm not trying to insult you. I just totally don't understand it. I just don't. I wish I did. But drawings just don't do it for me, I guess. Think it's a generational thing, maybe I don't understand. Um, let's see, let's see. The hell was I gonna do? Oh, check the plants, check the plants. Lot of cops about. I'm just grabbing my water, sir. Grabbing some water. Come on, baby, don't be, oh, I wonder if they water themselves in the rain or does the rain count? There goes all that water. Grab a bunch of bottles. Make sure we're good and watered. And we're at 50%, it's like day four, okay, this is getting super annoying. Wanted to be a lot faster than that. I'm gonna set up a daytime grow soon, but we're gonna dry this all out first. And we'll use the profits from these to fund the other. Okay, they're all empty, so I'm just gonna dump these in the trash. That's the whole point, we put those water bottles there though. It's just to make it easier, before we didn't have to like collect water every time and bring it to it. Grab the rest of our stuff, I guess. See, nothing. Package 10, dump the rest. Drop off that money to Eddie too at the same time. Alright, never get me coppers. See? Uh, one other thing we need to do is get some sugar, but I just spent all our money with Eddie. We'll talk to Eddie again and see what we owe him still. I think it's like, probably like three grand. Something like that. See how much room he gives us for our next order. I think the idea is to max out your orders and then when uh you can't order all of a sudden, then you've got like a lot. So we'll do the best we can. Just heard the phone again, we probably got more cash to pick up. Had to keep that in mind, we got dope on this though. A handful of cash. Or we can buy some sugar. There we go. For our next mixtures, cuz I think we only got like 100 left for the mix, and that's just not gonna cut it. So I'm just gonna check our little loot areas. Pick up some sugar. Time is up. We got one hour until we gotta meet Keggy, so you guys are just gonna hang out with me. I hope you don't mind. I don't know, I was gonna pause the video and edit it and all that crap, but I hate doing that. I love pumping out tons of video. Tons of new content. All time, baby. Wonder if this chick would buy from me. They should make that a thing. Don't got that much, what do we got? Five, that'll do it. Alright, so, let's get this dope off of us anyways, before we get pinched for this little tiny amount. That would be silly. So I'm gonna end up forgetting we have it, getting us arrested. Let's go drop off our sugar, and we'll go meet this Keggy guy. Hopefully, it's the right time, I don't know, like, I tried to meet him before 11, we couldn't, so maybe it's between 11 and 6, I don't know. Alright, I was supposed to talk to Eddie too and ask him what else we owed him. Okay, let's just put the sugar up here. Mess not done yet. Let's go up and ask Eddie, and then when he tells us, we'll run and meet Keggy again, hopefully. Should read this message again. Yeah, okay, so between 11am and 6pm, so this is the right one. I write it wrong, I'm sorry. Sometimes I just don't pay enough attention. The heck do we wanna do, call Eddie? Well, three grand's not so bad. Get as much cash as we can and we'll re-up our, our order. Do it as much as we can for amp, I guess is what we're gonna need. What are you doing? Search me, idiot. So, spent a little bit of last episode talking to Catherine about um Drug Dealer 2 Simulator. Just around the corner, I think. They showed some actual gameplay. Uh, she pointed out it's gonna be co-op mode, which I thought was pretty cool considering. Um, might be fun to play with friends, build a drug empire together. So, uh, there's some thoughts on that, um. Gonna try and talk to some other people and then maybe plan it with me, maybe I'll try playing with some strangers or something like that. Don't really know them, but uh, not a lot of people I know my age play games like this, to be honest. Oh, there we go. This audio is so real, so quiet. I like your plays, Keggy dude. Who's this guy? Hey, bro? Pretty sure that's one of the dudes that buys shit from me. So like blah, 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 he's got some sort of big speech he gives to us. I wasn't paying attention, yes, that's true. Honestly, I can't really remember even doing the meth deals. I know that we're not gonna make as much money, but that was our own fault because we put ourselves in so much trouble, basically. Getting caught and getting arrested and uh, there was a whole bunch of stuff. But, I'm kinda interested in seeing it from this angle, like, I think I've only ever done this one time, long, long ago, when I first started. Yes, Keggy. No, Keggy? I don't know what he's talking about. That guy uh bodyguard bud? Yeah, yeah. Correct. Can't look at my phone in this mode. Yes, Keggy, let me go, please. They eat the caretakers? Well. Yeah, sure. Hell, yeah. Is he talking about me? Is he gonna eat me? I don't understand his metaphor. Am I the lion keeper or the lion? Sounds good. You don't have to call me white boy though. You can just call me by my name. Which I don't know what it is in this game, probably Tom. Thanks, bro. I'm not gonna call you mean stuff, cuz I think you're cool, man. We could be friends if you just chill a little bit. I don't care where nobody's from, baby, I'm friends with everybody. Oh, there we go. 10 times 20 grams, that's a weird order. I think we can cover that, no problem, guys. Nice, we did it, we opened up Keggy. So I'll get home and that'll be the episode. I'll save it as soon as I can. If I can't save it right away, I'll just end it and I'll bring you guys back for the nighttime. If you wanna start seeing what's going on during the day and you wanna start doing more during the day, let me know in the comments what you think and maybe we'll do it. I'm down for whatever, dogs. Arfriig, I didn't mean to swear, sorry. There we go. See, when I swear it's by accident, it's because you lost control. That's how swearing's supposed to be used. Youngsters these days, they just swear at everything. Swear at the wall, they swear at their feet. God, I'm bad at picking locks, eh? But at least I can accept that. Oh my god, I picked the wrong door. Oh, it's this one, oh my god, and it's open. Money! That's my favorite thing to get, money guy. Right, I'm supposed to be ending this, I forgot. Let's just check this one and we'll go. Need that walking around pocket money, guys. So let's take our time on this deal. When do we have until? It's Wednesday. We have till Sunday, so let's go like Friday or Saturday, we'll deliver it. And that way we have a bigger chance to pay Eddie off and get a better supplies. Um, and we'll just keep on building up our supplies, or we can keep on making these gang deals even when uh we're in trouble. And we can't afford it, really. And when that drug face guy Eddie stops selling to us, we'll be all prepared for the whole thing. Alright. Let's see. Yep, ready to save, so thanks so much for watching. Make sure you thumbs up the video, make sure you check out my page, make sure you go to queenfishgames.com and at least have a look at my new project. If you think I'm funny, if you think I'm fun to hang out with, you're gonna love the game, I'm assure you. So that's it for now, and we'll see you next time. Peace.